Good evening and welcome to the February 12th Palmer Town Council meeting. Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item is visitors' comments for items not on the agenda. Anyone like to speak?
I had a question. A couple meetings there Mr. Kachi talked about borrowing money. Some kind of project. I don't know, was it fun? I want to talk to you about borrowing money and interest rates and stuff.
I don't remember that.
There's no project.
Was it the sewers thing?
You looking to borrow money on? For?
Not at the moment.
At the moment? Alright, next question.
Do you remember what it was pertaining to?
No, but they talked there a couple meetings ago about the roof on the sewer plant there that you may have to borrow money to.
Oh, we're definitely gonna have to borrow money for that, yes. Yeah. Yep. Yes.
Okay, how much?
I don't... I'm not sure. We can get you that number. I don't have the number off the top of my head tonight.
Just it seems spent money on that track, two and a half million dollars and you've got a roof on a building in town that's gonna be repaired and now you're gonna borrow money.
Well, we would've had to borrow money anyway. We don't have $4 million lying around, so.
Alright, now, next thing is budgets. That Mr. Kachi was talking about. Does the town council, the whole council, get involved with the budget process at the beginning or just when everything all set and done you come in?
Oh, no. We have a...so the town manager has to give us a budget by March 1st or thereabouts. And the whole budget goes to the full council. The whole council reviews it. There's a budget subcommittee made up of three counselors. The counselors that are not on the budget subcommittee are supposed to review and get their questions on any items of the budget to the members of the subcommittee. So the subcommittee is myself, Jessica, and Mark this year. And those are, those are public meetings. Those are posted meetings. And those meetings usually occur with the town manager and the town accountant. And then we go through the whole budget. We ask questions. We review the capital plan that was presented. And then we move forward our recommendations as a subcommittee to the full council and then that's what's voted.
Okay, so when these department heads come asking for money, you decide to blank checkout or do they have to itemize what they want this money for?
Yes. Yep. They, they have to present a budget to the town manager.
Budget, but how, do they have to itemize how they're gonna spend this money?
Yes.
They do.
Yep. Yep. And then if they request as part of the capital budget, they have to explain why the item is needed. So they have to give documentation that backs up the expense that they're looking to make.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome. You're back. You do. I'm just gonna ask you to identify yourself, okay?
I'm Ms. Fitzgerald. And I live in Bonsville and I'm new to the area, so I do walk around, senior citizen and all. I've had a lot of problems with vehicles parked on the sidewalk where I have to walk in the street or trash cans. You put out the trash weekly and you can't even walk on the sidewalk. That's my number one gripe. I don't know if this is the right spot for it. And also, the horrendous amounts of trash in, in yards all over Bonsville. I don't know if anything can be done with looking into renovating Bonsville. I mean, with the possible train coming through, I mean, you want the place to look a lot better than what it does now. So that's it.
So I would suggest if you have any specific areas of concern that you reach out to Mr. Reed so that he can look into it and talk to, like, whether it's a police issue or a zoning issue. There could be various things. Okay? So I don't know if you wanna give him a call. It would be the town manager's office, okay?
Alright.
Alright, and he'll look into it. Thank you. Anybody else? Yep.
Dave Golden. We spoke a lot about the coming train at the recent implementation committee. And since it might be a little while before we have a new town manager, I'd just like to suggest that the town council appoint, appoint person to be there, to be dealing with the state. I don't know, maybe there already is somebody specific that's taking care of that, but we're poised, it looks like, if, without any unforeseen circumstances, we're gonna get this train and I don't want us to fall behind. And we need to be proactive, I think, in whatever that the state needs from us and whatever we want from the state, more importantly.
Right. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Next item on the agenda is the minutes from August 14th. Does anybody have any comments? No? Seen none? Do you have a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion by Jessica, second by Phil. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstained.
We have no old business, new business. The first item is the warrant for the presidential primary and that is for us to sign. So the, the primary is, is on Tuesday, March 5th, from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. And the purpose of the primary is for presidential preference, state committee man, state committee woman, and town committee. Do we have that to be signed?
There is two there.
Is this early? I feel like it's early.
Mm-hmm.
Same time?
Mm-hmm.
Just so everybody's aware at home, who's up for reelection this year? Or up for election, I should say, this year for the town?
This isn't for the town.
Oh, it's not?
This is the, this is the primary, for the presidential primary.
Okay, so that's why I was like, this seems early.
Oh, yeah. Different election.
So our town elections are in May, right?
June.
June. Yep.
Can you forward that one to me?
Got it.
So yes, it is early for that.
Just forward it to...
Okay. Next is John Latour is going to speak to us regarding CDBG fiscal '24 and he'll be looking for a vote. John, come on up.
Good evening. I'm here to talk about the FY '24 Community Development Block Grant that we're looking for approval to apply for.
Do you wanna stand or sit?
I can stand.
Okay.
Alright, I could sit too.
Whatever, whatever you wanna do.
You're comfortable.
So with that grant, the prior grant, the FY '22-23, we are performing infrastructure work on Maple Street and it's comprised of design for Maple Street and Maple Terrace. And that, that's currently ongoing. We want to, this current grant FY '21-22-23 will be for the implementation of the construction on that project. So we wanna apply for FY '22 to do the work requisite to Maple Terrace. And it's the same type of work. It's sewer, water, and drain lines. And that's the other part of the grant is social services and administration. And in the social services, in the past, we've domestic violence task force related work and the, the transportation grant through QB CDC, the connector, if you've seen that around town.
Anything else?
That's not... The total budget that we would be applying for under FY '24 is $950,000.
I have a quick question for you.
Sure.
So recently, within the past couple of years, we have falling out of a certain status. Now we're going after the big chunk, I guess, right? We're competing with other towns and cities for a larger chunk of money because we don't fall under some qualifying...you wanna explain real quick?
Sure. We were a mini entitlement in the past. We fell one tenth of one percent above the median poverty rate for the state. COVID, I'm sure, affected that. And with that, we won't know the next results for about three years. It'll be about 2025 when, when the next mid-census information comes out.
Got it. So we did, we did land though, the good chunk last year, right?
We did. We scored high and we got 1.35 million for this, for the FY '22-23 grant. They combined two grant years in one.
Awesome. And then we're just gonna try that again?
We're gonna try that again and keep with the same premise of getting design on the next set of streets and construction.
Just having a plan and, and going after that plan.
And whatever the worst streets that were, need the most attention is what we're trying to focus on.
Awesome.
And we, the, the results, and they put a, a camera, CCTV, into the lines and they date from the night, about 1900.
Wow.
To more contemporary. So you see the history of infrastructure when you look at the camera footage. And in a kinda nerdy sense, it's kinda neat to see how things have progressed.
That's really cool.
Yeah.
For those of us that don't know, what's DVTF?
Domestic Violence Task Force.
Okay. I just wasn't putting the letters together. Okay.
So now that we do have to, we have to apply and it's a competitive for us, how does that work as far as, do we have, just like, do they look at if you got, if you got grant funding the year before into the calculation of, to whether you get it again? Or is it just, it starts over, it's competitive, and everybody's looked at equally for the next round, well, the new year of grants?
They look at the capacity to manage, because it would be concurrent with FY '22-23, but the prerequisite for applying, we've already met that standard. We're applying for a waiver because we do have money left from the FY '20 grant, but it's, it's a two or three housing rehab projects out of 17 units that are in the final stages of construction. So once that's complete, we move on to the FY '21, which we've already met the standard for that. We're about 83% spent on the FY '20. We're almost 80% spent, spent on the FY '21. And we have all our, all our prerequisites for the FY '22-23 in place to apply for the next round. And I'm working on the waiver right now.
And just for the people out there, community involvement, going to the meetings and signing that they were there increases your chances of securing these grants, correct?
Correct. And it shows the level of interest.
Right. So just to get that out there, you know, more participation from the town itself is always needed to be able to keep securing these grants.
Right.
We should repeat that over and over to them. Get in their head.
So that, that's a good segue into what was gonna be my next question because you're, you're holding these meetings during the day when a lot of people work. And so I was wondering, you know, what type of participation, how many people are actually coming to a meeting at 4:00 or 5:30 in the afternoon versus, I think the meetings used to be like 6:30, 7:00. I mean, I would think that 4:00 is really tough for people to go to and, and even 5:30 for people that work till 5:00. So is there a reason that the meetings have been changed to an earlier time?
Well, only, only due to some of the availability of where, where we are holding the, the meeting. And we've had feedback from some people about being able to attend because, you know, we attend, we've put on public hearings for the FY '21-22. We were, we were here well past 10:00. So we've met with people. We don't leave at 5:30 or 6:00, 6:30 when people start to come. We just stay.
Yeah, I think though, that if, I mean, for me, if I saw something advertised at 4:00, I would realistically think it's at 4:00 and if I roll in at 5:00.
Probably missed it.
If I could put a range in, if that, I would put a range of time. I mean, we'd stay till...
I mean, that might be, that might be a little bit better. And then, I mean, I think too, the police, the, the meeting room at the police station is always a good alternative and I think that that is...
The library.
The library also, the community room at the library, so, yeah.
That's probably even one of the better ones to, to gander more people to come to, you know, with the library, hopefully promoting it also to get the word out there better.
We do post the, the meeting, public notice at the library, the police station, town hall, the town website. We selected the cultural center because it's, it's proximate to Three Rivers where the, where the proposed work is gonna occur.
Yep.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions?
Just a quick, so years back, Three Rivers was classified as a low-income opportunity tract. Does that help us at all?
It does and, and to, to a large degree for some of the grants. When they're, when we lost our mini entitlement status, it's, it's the whole town.
Got it.
So the, the census tract that's down there meets better than 51% of the low-income criteria.
Got it.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you.
Okay, next item is acceptance of a gift donation of $2,000 from John J. Mullin, Senior Charitable Trust to be used for fuel assistance for residents of Palmer Community Development Office.
I don't think there's anything in the pack up, maybe John can speak to that.
Gift.
$2,000. Is this a, so what, we already accept, we accepted two, I think, at our last meeting, if I'm remembering. This is additional?
It is.
Is it from the same person?
Same person.
I thought so, yeah.
The Mullin family, very generous people that they donated 5,000 the year prior.
Right.
5,000 this year and now another 2,000.
Wow.
So we've had a, from, from, we've had a couple of good instances, good generous donations from, from local or people who lived locally prior, years prior. They've been very generous.
That's amazing. I'm gonna definitely say thank you publicly to the Mullin family, definitely, because there's people out there that need it.
Yeah, absolutely.
There's Leo Walsh too, I think is the other one.
From last time, yeah.
Yeah. They donated again.
They also did?
Yeah.
Okay. We have the 2,000, we have the 2,000 on tonight's agenda.
They'll use, I think you approved the Leo Walsh.
The last meet, right, the last one. Yeah, it was, it was Mullin and Walsh, I believe, at the last meeting. Okay, do you have a motion to accept the donation of $2,000?
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion by Matt, second by, was it Carl? Okay. I, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Can you send another thing to me behalf of the council to them? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so the next item on the agenda is Tina Broman, our Veterans Agent, and Rick Publiego, a request to dedicate Main Street, Three Rivers Bridge. If you wanna come up. Hi, how are you?
Good. I met Mr. Publiego probably a year ago now. He came into my office with a folder with a passion for his history on his family, in particular his uncle. I don't wanna take up any of his time. He had a knee operation, so that's why he's sitting. But I fully support him and what his family is looking to do and I'll have him explain it. If you have any questions, I'll be here.
Perfect.
Thanks, Tina.
Good evening. We're here tonight to put a proposal together for renovating the Main Street, Three Rivers Bridge in honor of our hometown hero who gave his life in France during World War II. Iggy was his nickname, was one of 12 brothers and sisters. He's born and raised right here in Three Rivers, about 10-minute walk to the bridge. Iggy actually came home, he was lucky, he had came home before he was shipped over to France, to England rather. And he had told his family that he wouldn't be back. And this is, in the past three years, I've been doing research on him. And I've been very fortunate to meet two historians and two book writers who write, a lot of their books are on World War II. Uncle Iggy actually had, after his jump into D-Day, he had 17 days where he passed on the 17th day and we don't know how, what happened. He was a machine gunner. Let's see. He was a member of the 506 Parachute Infantry Regiment, which would be the Band of Brothers. He trained with, went alongside the Band of Brothers. And also the Filthy Thirteen, I don't know if everybody or anybody has heard of the Filthy Thirteen. They're, they were an explosive, they were our first demolition team that we had for any war. And these guys were, it was actually made after the film, The Dirty Dozen. The Dirty Dozen was a bunch of murderers and killers and stuff. But the Filthy Thirteen were, it was, they were a bunch of alcoholics. So, but they were, they're good at what they did. So Iggy was fortunate enough to work alongside the Filthy Thirteen. And their, their mission that, or for jumping in behind enemy lines during D-Day were to take over, capture four bridges that went into Carrington. So they stopped, actually stopped the 17th Panzer Division from crossing the bridges. That night, they captured, they, they captured all four bridges, blew up two of them and two of them survived. And now, those are the ones that the Americans used to go into to meet up with the Germans. He also fought against the Sixth Fleschheimer, I believe, and I could be wrong on the pronunciation. But they were Hitler's top machine gunners, gunners and so that was also, he was fortunate enough to do that. He still, to this day, during his basic training in Tacloban, Georgia, he was one of 7,000 men and only 2,000 made it. He holds the record to this day for a march that they did in 1942, I wanna say. They marched 149 miles in 72 hours. And that, the Japanese, Imperial Japanese were the ones that held the record up until the time. These guys did it. And their commander was Colonel Sink, like I said earlier. He was, he was a tough guy. He was so tough that after they left Tacloban, Georgia, the Army came in and actually condemned the obstacle course. They said it was inhumane what, what Colonel Sink made these guys do. And alongside the 7,000 men, if somebody got hurt one day, they were gone and the next guy stepped up. They wanted to make these guys the toughest guys. So anyways, he was one of 45 planes that left Exeter, England. And then 750 left out of a pottery. But these guys were a special group that he jumped with. They were pretty much the, the guys that put out the beacons or they called them the So anyways, he left England on the night of June 6th, or actually the night of June 5th. They were actually in England the day before, in Normandy, I'm sorry, the day before. And let's see, he was also lucky enough to be asked to jump for General Eisenhower and Winston Churchill. And we have a letter actually from Iggy that he wrote home and said he had the privilege of jumping for the dignitaries that he put on a display for these guys. And also, he was lucky enough to be, he was NH Company, but by the time he went over to Normandy, they moved him into Headquarters Company. So he was one of the chosen guys. Let's see, his name, he's been publicly recognized in some books too that I have. One book called Tonight We Die As Men and that's from Ian Gardner. He's also in other books by Mark Bando, who's another historian. And I've had the privilege of meeting them. The little jars that you guys have with the Army men, that's original Omaha Beach and when my wife and I just came back in June from France and England, we were lucky enough to go over there and meet a couple of the authors that wrote the book about Iggy, or about Iggy and his group, I should say. And all we're looking for is some support. We currently have support from the Amets, Post 74, the Palmer Historical Center, Representative Todd Smolow in the Palmer Library are backing us. Actually, the Palmer Library did a one-hour video on Uncle Iggy. And that's it. I guess we, what we're looking for is to rename the bridge in Main Street, Three Rivers and have it as Iggy Screamin' Eagle Bridge. And he was part of the Screamin' Eagles, which is the Band of Brothers also. And also, what we'd like to do, the Screamin' Eagles are actually still around. There's a group out of, their home is Campbell, Kentucky. And if, say, in the future, somebody else from the Screamin' Eagles is killed from town, we could also name them, we'd keep it going. So it would not only be Iggy's bridge, it would be any Screamin' Eagle who passes away during wartime. And the booklet I gave you guys, there's, I mean, talks about his lineage, it talks about what he did. There's some copies of letters that he wrote home. And that's about it. Anybody have any questions?
I did get to read some of the letters, very touching. And some of the guys he was with, this, this one here, Jake McNasty.
Yeah.
They only let him out of the brig when it was time to go.
True, he was an alcoholic.
Didn't get to read it. Says Jerry, Jake McNasty, McNeese was sergeant in charge of the Filthy Thirteen. He spent more time in the brig than out. Jake was only allowed out when the group was going on a mission. He was one, only one of two men to make all four of the jumps during World War II, Normandy, Holland, and Germany. Kinda touches out tough.
He trained, he was lucky enough to train with those guys.
Right.
As a matter of fact, that night, the night of the D-Day, he was one of the guys that paddled the boat to go underneath one of the bridges that they were gonna blow up and put explosives. So Iggy actually worked along with him. There's a story about Jake McNeese. While he was in England training, he was from Oklahoma, he was an Indian, so he was good at hunting and fishing and everything. Well, the deer herd, there was a special deer herd that the owner, where they were staying while they were in England, had a herd of deer. And the deer just kept on disappearing. Nobody could tell where the hell the deer went. You know, where'd the deer go? They're gone. So finally, they brought in a couple bobbies and they were questioning Jake underneath a tree. Well, while they were questioning Jake, he had two deer hanging up in the tree drying out. So he, and he said, Jake, we know you have a part in, a hand in this effort. And Jake, no, no, not me, not me, but Jake was the one. And he also was known for, he was a good fisherman and they had a stocked pond, so their pond would disappear. And even some of the officers said, Jake, every night we walk by, you know, you get this beautiful smell, barbecue smell coming out of your tent and everybody else is at the chaw, you guys haven't been in two months. So like I say, Jake was a hellion. And the only reason Jake went in is he almost killed a man in a bar fight. And he ran to Oklahoma and signed up for the Army quick and he wanted to be a part, a paratrooper. Now, these, Iggy was also one of the first paratroopers this country ever had. So, I mean, there's a lot of firsts for him. And he's never been honored, he's never been, you know, in any way. He gets a flag. He's actually buried in Bonsville. He... He had a chance to be buried in Normandy Cemetery, but my grandparents wanted him home, wanted his body back home. And that's, that's it about Iggy.
So I have a quick question. And it's historical, and you may or may not know, but where was the Civilian Conservation Corps Camp in Palmer?
No, it was, it was in Pittsfield. Does it say Palmer?
Yeah, you actually have a map here, an old map, and it says that the one-seventy-three was actually right here in Palmer.
Unless he was from Palmer, I have no idea, I didn't read that map.
I'll have to dig into it.
Yeah. I have, I have plenty of paperwork at home. Like I say, I've been studying for the last three years on my uncle. The more I'm finding out, the more it's, you know, it, his history is unbelievable, what he did for this country. Like I said, he died at the age of twenty-two. And we're looking for, because of trying to name the bridge in his honor, that was his duty when he jumped into Normandy, was to help the Filthy Thirteen take over those four bridges.
Anybody have any other questions? Okay. I just had one question, so I, I support this, so I, I was just wondering, so you're saying a bronze plaque placed on a rock, where, where do you envision that going?
Right as you enter the parking lot downtown. Right there, it's between the parking lot and the river.
Okay.
Yeah, Lavalut Park.
Yeah.
And there's a tree there, but there's also room for, like I said, we're only looking for a rock probably two, three high, two, three feet high, with a bronze plaque. And all, the expenses, it won't cost the town a penny. And we can do a ceremony. What I'd like to do is, would be June sixth, which is D-Day, or the twenty-third, which is the day he died.
Okay.
And that's, like I say, we'll have a DJ there, music, I'll see if we can get a tent, chairs for people to sit on.
We'll have to coordinate with the DPW too, because that area of that parking lot has always been, or has been in the past neglected, to be cleaned up, right there on the corner, so, yeah.
I was gonna suggest that, I mean, I don't envision, there's not gonna, there's gonna be opposition when I ask for a vote, but I think that if you can work with Mr. Reed, and then he can get you in touch with whoever on the town side you need to work with, to be able to, we just wanna make sure, like, the place, like, you're putting it on town property and all. I mean, I don't, I don't know anything about whose land is what, and if all that parking lot is ours, or I, I just would hate for you to put something down, and then there's an issue down the road, so, okay?
And I believe the town owns the bridge?
Yes.
Yes.
The state came and fixed it for us, but the town owns the bridge.
Correct.
Okay.
This sidewalk kind of wraps into the parking lot, doesn't it?
It does, yeah. It would be right around that fence.
Right.
And then, possibly, a few, either plaques or even a piece of wood with a little bit of history on Iggy.
Sure.
On the bridge or something. We haven't decided, we haven't talked about that. But definitely a bronze plaque.
Have you figured out where and how you're gonna get a rock there?
Oh, I'll get a rock there.
I'll just.
I have a nephew.
I, I got plenty of them.
I have a nephew who's a contractor. He works with concrete a lot of the time, so he's got the heavy-duty equipment to get a rock there. Oh, we're not talking, I'm not looking to get a big rock, just enough to, to put a bronze plaque on.
Like what you see in front of the Three Rivers Fire Department.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
Or at the Veterans Parks.
Yeah.
Okay, do I have a motion to name the Main Street Bridge in Three Rivers in honor of PFC Ignacy, Ignacy Iggy Publiego? And dedicate, so it'd be dedicated to him and to all of those of the Greatest Generation who sacrificed during, sacrificed their all during World War II.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion by Mark, second by, I think it was Carl, he had his hand up.
Okay.
It's okay.
Let's flip a coin.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? And I wanna just thank you for your patience as we were transitioning between Mr. Reed coming, Tina did reach out to me, and I just, can we just please wait till we have a little stability here? So I appreciate you, your patience in this, but.
Plus, we were also finalizing the, the whole document and the procedure.
We actually did, we, we made a policy for, a naming policy.
Yes, yes. And like I said, I do have the Amets support, they wrote a nice letter for me.
Yeah, we have.
I want to thank you all on behalf of my office and veterans, that kind of chokes me up, because I've been talking with him for, I don't even know, the very first person probably that walked in my office in January, when I, when I came aboard. So I know how much effort he's put into this and his family, and how much it means. And it's really a, an honor to have that bridge named after him, means a lot.
Agreed. Rick, thank you for your time and research, that's.
Thank you. And, and not only that, there are a lot of other veterans out there that don't know what happened. I had one lady contact me, her brother was actually on a ship when it sank down by the Bahamas, and they never found his body. But I did some research for her also. So I, I like going around talking to people about World War II. Thank you.
Thank you.
Need any help with a truck or a trailer?
Okay, I'll keep him on. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna skip around for a second.
I was just gonna say, I know Bernie is waiting.
Been waited in the wings.
Yeah.
Okay, we're gonna switch, switch to the Town Manager Search update, and we're gonna actually connect via Zoom to Bernie Lynch from Community Paradigm. So we'll just wait for that to happen. Are you texting him? Okay. Come on. There it is.
There he is.
Let's see. Should be connected to that.
Bernie, can you hear us, or me?
Mike, can you hear, I just can't see you.
Okay, okay, perfect. All right, we're gonna turn it over to you, okay?
Sure. All right. If you can see me, that's great, let me, let me do this, let me, excellent, thank you. Thank you for having me here tonight and allowing me to do this by Zoom, it's very helpful. What I wanted to do is bring the council up to speed on where we are with the Town Manager Search. I think we're, we're at a good place right now, and I'd like to kind of walk you and the viewing public through where we started, and where we are today, where we, where we think we're going to complete this process over the next couple of weeks. So I'm just gonna share a screen that I have, you can see me, correct?
Yes.
Okay, great. All right. I think the council all has the PowerPoint presentation that I'm going to put up on the screen. So, we just put that up.
It's the same thing that they gave you guys, you don't have to turn around.
Okay. So this is our presentation to the Prime Town Council on February twelfth. Just to give you a, you know, sort of a refresher on, and again, well, the public, I guess, on where we are with your guys' search, we were engaged by the town on November sixteenth to begin the process of helping you find a new town manager. And, you know, immediately when we go into a town, we, we work with the identified stakeholders, you know, the people in departments and the certain council members to sort of pull together the information to put together a position profile. Now, we were, we were in Palmer just three or four years ago, so we had a good start already on this that gave us some, you know, background as to what the, what the community was all about. But obviously, we wanted to, to update that to any changes that have been taking place since that time, and any new issues that, that people were concerned about. And obviously, new information about the town's finances, projects that were in place or on the table back then that we had now been completed. So we developed that position profile, and we submitted it to the council, we're reviewing it, adopting. And we really began the active recruitment on December twelfth. And our active recruitment means the obvious advertising position, which in our case would be the Massachusetts Municipal Association and the International City and County Managers Association, both of which have very active job boards. We also posted this position at a variety of graduate schools that, in public administration, as well as other locations, internet-based locations, in which we found that we could get the word out on the street with regards to the, to the position, and so that people were aware that the Palmer was looking for a new town manager. We have a database of roughly four hundred people at this point, made up of people that have, that we've been working with through the years, they've been applicants in other positions perhaps, or people that have contacted us that, that have indicated an interest in becoming a municipal manager in Massachusetts, many of whom obviously are here in Massachusetts. They may already be serving as a town manager or assistant town manager in a community out there. Well, there may be people that are department heads, that, that we've been working with in a variety of ways, that we think would be a good town manager in the right community. So we submitted this, sent out this position announcement to those four hundred people to let them know that the position was open, that we were looking for applicants. And then we conducted, we conducted the real active recruitment, you know, in many respects, one of the key reasons why you, you engage with, with a firm such as ours. And that is that we have the ability to reach out to candidates, make the cold calls, that we think are particularly good candidates, that we should, we should bring to the table and see if we can get them to be interested in a position like this. Because I think I indicated when we met back in November, and I think, as you all know, it's a very challenging market, particularly west of Worcester, to find candidates for these manager positions. So it really requires knowing who the candidate pool is, and being able to make those calls and try to connect people to the positions that we have available, to make sure that we have a good active pool for the, for the town. Our initial deadline for applications was mid-January, January fourteenth, and we received fifteen applications, which is, is a pretty, actually a pretty good number. Even closer to Boston, we've been seeing, you know, application of pools in roughly the twenty, twenty to twenty, you know, usually low twenties in terms of applicants. So to have fifteen applicants in Palmer, you know, we felt that was, that was pretty good. Obviously, the numbers don't matter as much as the quality. And, you know, we think that we had a, a good number of, a good, strong candidates out of that fifteen that we could, that we could look to. And the screening committee that you appointed met on January twenty-fifth. And let me, at the outset, commend the council on your choice of members of that screening committee. An excellent group. Obviously, one of your fellow council members, Jessica Sizer, was, was part of that committee. In fact, the, the group elected her as the chair. Obviously, your police chief brought quite a bit to the table, as well as your councilman, Mark was there to, to help us go through this, as well as two residents that was, were very helpful in, in sort of presenting what Palmer was looking for at this point in time in their next town manager. So we met on January twenty-fifth. At that point, we only had fourteen applicants that remaining. One candidate had withdrawn for another position, so that left us, and that was one of our candidates that did have experience as a town manager. So that was disappointing to see, but again, given the competitive nature of the pool, of the marketplace, that's to be anticipated. Five candidates of those remaining fourteen were identified for interviews, but once again, we did experience another withdrawal. Once again, it was another position that, that opened up, that he was successful in obtaining, and he made the decision to withdraw from consideration. And again, it is unfortunate, in this particular case, it was a, a candidate with considerable amount of municipal management experience. The screening committee conducted their interviews on February third, Saturday. They spent the entire day, beginning very early in the morning and going till, right around five o'clock, I believe, where each of the candidates was brought in for an interview, and they were assessed by the committee on the Palmer-specific municipal experience and knowledge, and the style attributes that were identified in the position statement. And what I, what I refer to there as the Palmer-specific municipal experience and knowledge, that too is outlined within the statement of what the technical skills that you were looking for from your next town manager with regards to municipal finance, economic development, the personnel management experience, as well as knowledge of really just the trends in municipal government as to how to engage with the community and maximize the ability to develop consensus around issues and opportunities. Three of the finalists that were interviewed, three of the candidates that were interviewed by the committee were selected for presentation to the town council. Again, unfortunately, we did experience one withdrawal. That withdrawal was based more around their, their current employment and making the decision that after quite a bit of consideration, they determined that it was in their better interest, as well as their community interest, to stay in place and withdraw from the process, which left us with the two finalists that I'm going to present to you tonight. The first, both of these, I will note, have somewhat local connection to Palmer, on the Palmer area. As you will see, Carolyn Brennan is your, is your first candidate, and these are in alphabetical order. Carolyn has a certificate in local government leadership and management from Suffolk University, which is a program that was developed by Municipal Association, as well as Suffolk, to really build the next generation of municipal managers. It, a number of people that have gone through this program have gone on to become municipal managers here in the state. So Carolyn is, is, has been a participant in that program, and did receive that certificate, that graduate certificate from Suffolk University. She also has a master's degree in business administration from American, American International College, as well as a BS in human development from UMass Amherst. She's currently the town administrator in the town of Hadley, a position that she has held for about three and a half years now. So she's had the opportunity to sit in that seat of being the chief administrator, chief executive officer within the town of Hadley. Palmer would be a new form of government for her, moving into a, as a, as an administrator, moving into a council form of government. But she's had the opportunity to work with developing a municipal budget, doing the collective bargaining, working on economic development, major project management issues. Prior to that, she had served in East Line Meadow as the Council on Aging Director. You can see that she served there for roughly thirteen years. In that capacity, she did work under a council manager form. There's only a number of them here in Massachusetts, the towns that have, that have adopted that form. So she has worked in one of those, so she understands the, the way that that form of government works. So she, she has that, that long background as a department head in East Line Meadow. And prior to that, she served for approximately thirteen years in the neighboring town of Hampton as the Council on Aging Director. I would note that Carolyn has also been a member of the Board of Selectmen, a member of the Finance Committee at Wilbraham, where she resides. So she comes with a substantial amount of background in municipal government, in the role as town administrator, but also notably as a department head, as well as a, a member of the chief elected board and the advisory board that worked with the legislative body in the town of Wilbraham. So Carolyn is, is one of your candidates, and comes, as you can see from the report we generated, comes with some very strong recommendations from the references and people we've spoken to that, through both these, people that she's reported to, as well as those people that have reported to her as from department heads. The second candidate is Brad Brothers. Brad is currently working on a master's degree in public, in business administration at Bridgewater State University. He's expecting that, a degree in December of twenty-four, so just about eleven months away. He does have a master's degree in education at Worcester State University, as well as a BS in business administration from American International College. Brad is currently the assistant town manager in the town of Plymouth, a position that he's held now held now for almost two years. He was, to a large extent, recruited into that position by the, by the town, having served as, previously as the school business administrator for Plymouth Public Schools for, from '21 till '22, for roughly a year. So he's been serving in that capacity. I mean, I'm sure many of you are familiar with Plymouth and its historical significance here in the Commonwealth, but Plymouth is also a very complex municipality, roughly 100 square miles, a population of almost 70,000 people, with full services in terms of water, sewer, harbor, not many communities in Massachusetts necessarily have a harbor, as well as a municipal airport. So there's quite a bit of complexity in Plymouth organization that Brad has had an opportunity to be involved with. Prior to that, he had served in a neighboring community in Plymouth, in Carver, as the chief operations and finance officer of their school department for roughly almost five years, right before he went to Plymouth. I guess more close to probably four years there, but he served in that capacity. And then prior to that, you know, and I noted that this connection to Palmer here, he was the business manager of your school department from 2012 to 2016. So those are the two candidates. Both are very excited to be candidates for the Palmer position. Brad, like Carolyn, came with very strong references from everyone we spoke to, and our own familiarity with both of these candidates speaks to their quality in terms of their passion for municipal management, and I think importantly, in their, in their knowledge and skills in municipal management. But I think notably, too, both come very highly recommended in terms of their ability to work with people, to work with boards, to work with businesses, to really work at developing consensus in the community in which they operate. The next steps in our process are an interview date on, I believe we've set aside February 22nd to conduct these interviews. The proposed interview topics that I would, I would suggest are, you know, I think it's important the council gets some sense of who these people are, specifically why they're interested in, I'm sorry, I'm working on another project, it's not, why they're interested in Palmer, Reading. We're interested in their leadership and management style. Again, managing an organization of this sort, you want to understand how they're going to interact with the, within the organization, with the staff, and outside of the organization, how they're going to interact with citizens and the stakeholders of the community. And in your particular case, given your villages and your quasi-independent or independent water districts and fire districts, you need someone that has the ability to reach out, have that, those leadership and management skills to build on those relationships. Like every community, there's limited resources, so financial management becomes crucial, and you want someone to understand the budget process and how to go about developing a budget built around the availability of funds and living within those funds, and living within the tax levels that are sustainable within the community. You do have a number of projects, and it's important that you have someone in the position that can manage those projects. Both of these candidates have that background in terms of capital expenditures, either in their positions as assistant manager or as town administrator, but also in their department head level positions. They worked in either the schools or the council on aging, where they were responsible for capital building projects. Community and economic development, in terms of developing a large tax base becomes crucial. And so you want, they want to test them on that experience that they have, and how they would, particularly how they would take on those issues in the town of Palmer, and work with the business community and the community as a whole in terms of development. The personnel management and labor relations skills, again, you know, based upon the feedback that we've received, it's important to have people that can help mentor the existing staff and develop that staff for you, so that, that becomes crucial. The external relations, state, federal, regional, working with neighboring communities, looking at opportunities for regionalization where it makes sense for the town of Palmer. And then returning once again to the issue of community engagement and citizen relations. I think every community has recognized that it's crucial that the town administration be able to work with citizens in a way that enhances transparency, citizen trust, and bringing people to the table. And we certainly heard that from members of the Palmer community, that that's an important trait, skill to have. And then lastly, always crucial, it has to be a partnership with the town council to have a successful relationship with the manager. So we're interested in hearing how they communicate with their boards, how they communicate, in this case with the council, we tend to, and how they work to have complementary roles so that this, you know, an effort towards problem solving to move the town forward. So those are our next steps, and I will now propose this and be happy to take any questions that council may have.
Anybody have any questions? So, so what I was thinking is that on the 22nd, we would start at six o'clock, okay, to give everybody an opportunity to get home from work and get here. And then we would obviously interview both people on the same evening. I think it would be best not to make a decision that night, but to then have a subsequent meeting to actually make, have the council vote and decide who we're going to pick. And so I would throw out either Monday, the 26th, or Tuesday, the 27th. I'm not sure what availability you all have, but I'd like to let Bernie know that tonight, just so he can plan accordingly. So how do those days work for all of you?
I'm laid out, so.
Anything's good for me. You said Monday 26th.
26th, looks good.
26th or the 27th.
Both of those days are.
Bobby, good?
I don't know at this point, so either one, I'll try to make work.
Yeah, I'll try the 26th.
Is everybody good for the 26th?
Sure.
What's night is that?
That's the Monday.
Last Monday of the month.
Yeah, so we'll do a 6:30. It's hard for some of us to get here. Six, okay, so.
Six thirty?
Six thirty on the 26th.
On the 28th.
Barbara, did you say six o'clock on the 22nd?
Yep, we're going to start at six o'clock on the 22nd, and then six thirty on the 26th to make the decision.
Okay. And based upon my recommendations regarding the topics, I will develop some, some questions, and perhaps we can talk at some point regarding how we will proceed with those, whether it will divide up the questions amongst the council. Sometimes what we've seen is that many communities prefer that they have the opportunity to dig into candidate responses to questions through follow-ups and additional probes, and that we would serve as a facilitator to the discussion by asking the lead-off question in each topic area. But I'm open to having that be however the council prefers.
So what is the pleasure? Do you want me to work with Bernie to come up with some questions, or, which I think will be easier in each of these categories, and then go with, like, I think the follow-ups are important because someone says something, I mean, a lot of times, interviews are, it's the response that.
If we have another question we can ask?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, so then there, so there would be like the, the specific question, like in each of these categories, right? And then there could be a follow-up to that question so that we can kind of dig, I, I think that's important, to be able to dig a little deeper, not just the canned response of what.
Yeah, we went through about, what, 100 per candidate? So I think we have a pretty good bank that you guys can leverage, and then build, you know, build those.
Well, I mean, to Mark's point, that was kind of how our interviews went, where we had the initial question, and then when there was room for follow-up, when we wanted to get a little bit more information, that's kind of how our interviews went, and I think that worked really well for us. So I think it would serve us well here.
Yeah, I just want to make sure everyone's okay with that, so that, because I think it's going to be very hard if everyone just brings the wrong question that night, because I want to make sure we hit every category, and then with the follow-up. So if you had something specific on community engagement, say, so there's like the standard question of whatever that may be, but then there can be follow-up. And then, but we also need to, I mean, Bernie, what are you thinking for the interview? How long? Because I feel like hour seems to be the standard, but if we have a lot of follow-ups, I don't know that it's going to be an hour.
Yeah, I actually like setting aside, like, if we start at six, go to, plan to go to seven fifteen, maybe a little, you know, if it's a little sooner or goes a little long, have the next candidate come in at seven thirty and have that go to about eight forty-five, thereabouts.
Okay, all right, so I just want to make sure everybody's okay with the standard questions being, so if we decide whether, we can decide if Bernie's going to ask those questions, or if we're going to do, you know, everyone's going to have a question to start off with, which I actually like better personally, is to, everyone to be involved, not just one person asking the questions.
Yeah, I got it, it's a specific one.
Okay, so I think if you have a specific one, let's see if we can work that into maybe the question.
That's fine, as long as.
Don't say it now.
No, it wasn't.
But we can, we can do that, and then kind of go, so is everyone good with that format?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
So, so we'll get you, we'll get you some draft questions, Barbara, and you can circulate them around, and then council members can take up whichever ones they want, and then fine-tune it to what they, specifics of what they want.
Okay.
Is that what you want to do?
I guess, yeah. We'll see how that works.
You said the same thing.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, all right, anything else for Bernie? Bernie, anything else for us?
No, no, again, I think you have two very good, strong candidates here, and I'm looking forward to the council conducting the interviews and ultimately make a decision. I think the town will do well either way.
All right, and you'll be here in person on the 22nd, correct?
Yes, I will, yeah.
All right, perfect, we'll see you on the 22nd then, and I'll talk to you before then.
Great, thanks, Barbara.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. Bye-bye.
The 22nd, are we all here, or just?
That's the interviews. Yep.
I think we're all saying the same thing.
Yeah, it's going to be a public meeting.
It's an open meeting.
I highly recommend that, why don't you?
We're not talking about that right now, but thank you. Okay. Next is the appointment of Sandra McConahey to the Conservation Commission with a term to expire in 2027.
So she has stepped forward with the vacancy in the Conservation Commission. She's shown an interest, and she comes recommended by the Conservation Commission. I want to be sure that the person or the applicant has taken some time to go to their meetings and is recommended by the commission, which she is. So I would ask the council to approve my appointment.
Make a motion, will you approve it?
Motion by Matt, second by Phil, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, perfect.
Thank you.
Next is review and discussion of policy implementation. The first is financial management policies.
So this is a follow-up to the study that was done, written to the board about, the council about, by the Department, Division of Local Services, part of Department of Revenue in June of 2017. The report itself is quite lengthy and gets into everything from investments to financial policies to what have you, and everything involving municipal finance. This is only the policy on financial reserves, and setting some guidelines for those reserves, specifically free cash and stabilization. So it's a start. I don't know if the council wants to vote this tonight, if you have any questions, but it is something that I think any community should have in place, it will provide guidelines for your future budget decisions for the manager, and reviewing departments and making recommendations to the council. But this is meant to be a step in that direction, if you have any questions or if you want to vote it, but this is, in my opinion, pretty straightforward. I think one thing I would point out is, you know, we're still looking for some information on this, you might see the note on the second page regarding the school capital improvement fund. I think that's also referred to as the school band stabilization. We are still trying to gather some information on that, and what that account is about. Apparently, it's been established quite a while ago.
Is it in a stabilization fund, though? I don't know if it is.
I was just going to ask that, I've never even heard that, I've been on the council for almost 10 years.
Not as a stabilization, I don't think.
Well, as I, we're still trying to get information on it.
Is that something that they use their budget to fund? It's not something that we've funded, or ever funded, here on the council side?
It's leftover bond proceeds.
We cleaned all that up, a couple of years ago.
They need to, so I, I mean, Eddie, I think if we're going to approve this, we approve it without that section in it?
Well, yeah, obviously, there's nothing in it for that section.
Well, there's something, well.
Well, it just says that, not sure what to do with this right now.
Yeah, there's a balance of over $300,000.
I think we need to look at that.
I would think.
I think it needs to be, like, looked backwards as to when that, when that balance to put in there.
What it's for.
We just did a major house cleaning and cleaned up a whole bunch of stuff, and I thought everything was done.
Those were like little balances, yeah. So did everyone have an opportunity to look at this?
Yeah, I didn't really have any questions.
The only question I have.
One to the geniuses.
Good, Mark, you look. The only question I had is, is due to our current, which you may or may not even know this, because it's our first budget cycle with you, you know what I mean, that you've stepped into, do we, and I've been a part of the budget subcommittee for years and years, are we capable of funding at that level? Of putting away 5% of the current operating budget into stabilization? Or even for free cash? Are we capable of putting away 3% to 5% of the annual budget for free cash?
So the free cash is that we're going to maintain the balance. So that means whatever, whatever the free cash balance is, we are not going to spend 3% to 5% of that balance, so that will fluctuate every single time.
Leaving at least 30% is, is at the bottom. So the last sentence is leaving behind, but it says on the top, maintaining a free cash range of 3% to 5% of the annual budget.
All right, could I just, yeah, there was some.
Wondering if.
I thought that came out.
Yeah, there was some confusion about that, Barbara and I talked about it, Gabriella and I talked about it. There was a revised policy that was emailed out, I'm sorry for the confusion.
No, it's all right.
But I think the, the reason for the confusion, and I was certainly confused about it, was that the first percentage, maintaining the 3% to 5%, that was really meant to keep a balance looking forward to, to help.
I thought it had been building in 3% to 5% so that you could get there.
Yeah, that was the confusion, and the, and the wording that was changed was, in order to maintain a consistent free cash balance, the town manager will propose budgets with conservative revenue projections. About 90% of the prior year's fiscal revenue and department heads will carefully manage their appropriations, so it, we took out the percentage and changed the wording to more meet the intent of, of the policy.
So that last sentence, further buzzer decision-makers, that just got taken out altogether, correct?
Well, the last sentence is there, but we took out the first percentage, because there was confusion about the two percentages, they seem to be in conflict.
That's what I was saying.
Yeah, one was 3% to 5%, another was 30% of free cash is, leave is unappropriated, so they seem to be, they seem to be in conflict, so we took out the 3% to 5%.
Oh, I disagree with that, I think you should leave the 3% to 5%, take out the 30%.
Okay.
Either way, either way, I just looked funny. So when I was going through it. And then the only other thing that I, that I need to ask is that, to achieve this, the town manager must propose budgets with a conservative revenue projection, about ninety percent of the prior fiscal year revenue. But that doesn't mean that we're still not going to the levy limit, is that correct? We would still budget to the levy limit.
If we needed to.
If we needed to, correct. Okay. I'll just throw it out there.
Well, why don't we talk about that language? And maybe you'll have more time to digest this and send any questions that you have. I can bring it back at a future meeting. Like I said, this is a start to put something in place that I really think the town should have.
And we've been talking about it for years. We just never really moved on it, right?
Well, we're trying some new things. We've developed standardized budget sheets that departments are working on, which will certainly help the town accountant in the future. Also, we have a capital committee that's been meeting regularly. In fact, Mr. Latour is our chair. We've had a couple of meetings. We were gonna have one tomorrow, but because of the snow, that'll be postponed. That's moving forward. And, you know, as you know, capital planning is an extremely important part of your budgeting to be able to see what's out on the, you know, five years and help you, help you plan, particularly when talking about free cash, where it's been the policy of the town to use free cash for capital, capital items. And how long can that be maintained with what's coming down the road? So that will help you in making those decisions.
Perfect. Thank you.
So we're gonna table this until you guys.
To the next meeting. Yeah, I wanna get, I wanna get this done. But I would also just say, Bob, I think that we should have a range for the stabilization fund. Not just five percent, but also a range. So if it's three to five or, and then I would say on the, I mean, maybe eight to ten is a little bit aggressive, and we maybe want to do like some other percentage.
Right.
But just a little bit lower.
Two to four.
Well, you want to go, if you're gonna do three to five, then it's six to ten. But also, we just want to be realistic.
Right, what's realistic?
For us, I think it's a little bit lower than eight to ten.
And then my other question is, for free cash, do we want to just keep it as three to five percent of the annual budget? And then not break that down further on how we're gonna use free cash? Like, well, so if we say we have three to five percent of the annual budget as our free cash, then some, some policies go into further detail where it says, you know, ten percent of that free cash goes to this, twenty percent of the free cash.
I don't think we should definitely do that because we never know what's gonna come and hit us on our fleet. So I would never, I would recommend not doing that, yeah. Because say we put ten percent in one bucket.
You're just handcuffing yourself.
Right, exactly. Say we put ten percent in one bucket and we can't do anything, yeah.
Change the policy.
So on your, on your stabilization fund, you had had a balance in twenty-three that was almost fourteen percent of your general fund balance. But that took a hit because of the roof.
Well, and.
We budgeted so conservatively that year that.
No, well, that was also probably the year that all of free cash was moved into the stabilization fund. So, which, you know.
We haven't moved that out yet, actually. I think that we had tabled, we had, there was a bunch of capital plan projects that we had questioned and said that we weren't getting any information on.
That was two years ago.
Right, let's put this money into stabilization.
They never voted.
They never voted on it again. So that money should still be in stabilization.
All right.
Yep. All right. So we'll just work on that a little bit more. Next is public participation, public comment period. So we had talked about this very briefly at, at a meeting regarding, there was a, the, the rules have changed for public comment periods. And so our council rules needed to be updated to reflect that. So Bob had reached out to the town attorney and asked them to take a look at our public comment period from our rules and adapt them to be in line with what the requirements now are. So this was, this is what he came up with. So I don't know if everybody had a chance to review it. But if everyone's good with it, I would just, we would be looking to insert this public comment period into the council rules.
Yeah, I liked it.
I did too.
I thought it was what was actually in there.
It's very close. Some of it is.
Right.
Some of it is.
Five minutes and. Yeah, he didn't make a great deal of changes.
I do just want to make a note that we are really, we're really lenient.
We're very lenient.
Very lenient, right? So I just want people to know that if you're here and you have a question, just be.
Mindful.
Mindful, right, that there is a public comment period and that we do take comments throughout the meeting and that it's up to the president's discretion on whether or not we're going to answer that question at that time. But that we are very lenient and that this policy is just for the books.
If a hundred people showed up at a meeting.
Right.
No, I understand. I get it.
Well, again, like if you had a hundred people here for the same thing, you would hope that they would have a lead person that would, which is in here, correct?
Yeah, it's like this last bullet.
Yep.
I'm with you. I just wanted to throw that out there.
No, I mean, I've tried to be.
Yeah, we are very lenient.
As everyone, yeah. Okay, so do you have a motion to, to approve the updated comment?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Phil, second by Jess.
Aye.
Thank you. And I would just suggest on that, my circulating this to town boards and committees, they don't necessarily have to adopt it, but I think it would be a good guideline for them and how they maintain decorum at public meetings.
You're saying that the update was, Robert's rules got updated?
No.
Is that how it is?
No.
There was a Supreme Court.
Oh, okay.
I don't remember what it was called.
Yeah, I knew the name, but.
Not to get into details, I was curious.
Google it and find out.
Google it.
Okay, next we have a review of street and sidewalk ordinances.
So this is the same as you have already except for A under three, which has been added. DPW director went over this with council and this paragraph was added. He's, also leaves debris, et cetera, has been added. But the primary concern here has been in different neighborhoods, whether it's some pumps or developments or what have you, discharging water onto public ways, freezing over the winter and really creating hazardous situations. So this was intended to, to deal with that, not to mention, you know, the DPW being called out in the middle of the night because of slippery conditions. Granted, it's a little late in the season to do this, particularly since your procedure is to have three readings. But at least this is intended to get the, the process started.
So we're just looking at this tonight and then we'll go through the.
Uh, council, depending on the changes, and council did send me some language about enforcement and then, which Barbara had a concern about. But, I mean, if council felt that this could be considered your first reading, the second one, of course, has to be advertised. But he felt that this could constitute your first reading.
Okay. Well, my concern, similar to Barbara's, about enforcement, and so is that this section one twenty-two dash eight?
Yeah, the, I can pass this over there. I think I made enough copies. He suggested, under enforcement, that the enforcing person shall be the director of public works or their designated agent or the Palmer Police Department. On the non-criminal disposition, you can also appoint a hearings officer. But as council and I discussed, I think that it's chapter forty U that needs to be accepted by the town. And my understanding is you haven't accepted that.
I thought we, I thought we did, because Ryan assumed the position.
I thought so too. That's always time, Bob.
Right.
But, yeah.
Well, we can investigate that more.
Yeah.
Yeah. So apparently about a year ago, I think we said it was a year ago, this came before the council. And we referred it to the ordinance subcommittee. I don't remember why. So when, when Bob had, well, actually Matt had mentioned it and then Bob. I had looked at it and I was like, the only thing that I could think that was an issue was that it didn't define.
Penalties.
Penalties, and that maybe that's what had happened. But I really don't, I don't remember a year ago why we said something to ordinance subcommittee.
I agree with that.
So, yeah, that's where we, that's where we are.
I don't think you had anything such, in such formal, in a format like this. I think it was just a general discussion that he had brought up.
I don't know. He kind of indicated that we did though. So, and then we just didn't review it. But I don't know.
I feel like this looks familiar.
I know we talked about in the past, like, people, you know, blowing leaves into the road and different things like that. But I don't know if that was just an informal discussion or if it was part of, of this coming forward. But anyway, it was referred to the, it was referred to.
Isn't that already be against the law to be throwing debris into your roads?
It is.
It is, yes.
Okay, so.
I guess this gives them the teeth to be able to issue fines.
You would think that if it's already a law, that the police officers would be able to enforce such a thing.
I've seen them do it.
It's a whole different world.
Hmm?
Nothing.
You said something.
So.
Not as relevant to the discussion.
Well, I should say.
So what would determine criminal versus non-criminal?
It could be either.
It's up to the, this says it's up to the discretion of the director or the police department. So I could make him mad and he can. Right, you need a three hundred dollar ticket?
The forty, the, well, the forty, the forty U.
That's right.
Acceptance sets up, like Matt said, a hearing, a hearings officer. And so that if somebody has a, you know, if feels that the, the fine that was issued is not valid or shouldn't be, shouldn't have been issued, then it goes to the hearing officer. So why don't we do first reading at the next meeting? And then find out for sure if the forty U has been adopted. And then if not, let's put the acceptance of forty U on the agenda for the next meeting also. I don't have that version. Okay. And then that way, at least the agenda will be specific, but it's first reading. So if anybody has any issues, they can. Okay.
And I'm assuming the word saying, when it says discharging water, is somebody pumping out their cellar or something?
Yeah, like sump.
Normal melting.
Could be, yeah.
Then, I mean, I had mentioned this to Bob before earlier today, that, you know, I did receive an email regarding snow removal from sidewalks and why it wasn't being enforced. And I, I realized that's a hard thing to enforce, not knowing the, sometimes the situation of why a homeowner isn't able to, to remove the snow. It could be, you know, age, health issues. It could be all kinds of different things. So, so I realize it's a touchy subject, but I, but I think too, I would just say this. If we are going to amend this, I just want to make sure that if we're putting this into place, that we do enforce it and not just have a, an ordinance on the books. I also don't know if there's a way to, and again, I, I didn't have a chance to call the chief or, you know, I don't know who issues. Again, this is, I don't know if it's a zoning enforcement officer or who it is that issues the, the, for sidewalks. But I also was wondering if we could just issue warnings as opposed to actual fines, just to let people know that there is an expectation.
Yes.
With, along with, with a copy of the.
The ordinance, right?
Yeah, good point, like a citation.
Because I, because I noticed also that there was a lot of, after the last snowstorm, there was a lot of posts on Facebook regarding some people not having a place to park their car off the road.
Right.
In some of the villages. And so that's the same thing. And then I, I saw like the comments that some of them were like, well, no, that doesn't apply to our street. I have no idea. So if there's, I guess like my point is, if there's streets that are exempted from, we should have that like readily available on the website so that you can, you can know like what you're supposed to do.
We did not even think.
That, so somebody posted that too, that they park on one side and then flip to the other side.
On one side, they plow and then you're supposed to move. Right. I literally thought that's how it was.
Park on somewhere.
On Main Street, you park on the side of the condos.
Correct.
Right, and not on the other side.
So I just.
I know School Street in Thornike was one of the complaint things that you had. And there is driveways for the people to park in, on School Street.
Yeah, I saw a lot, some of those were, some of the comments were from, from Bonsville. And I, I guess my point is just this. We need to do a better job getting that information out so that everybody knows what they're supposed to do and what the expectation is. So, I mean, I know it's gonna snow again, potentially, maybe.
In a couple hours.
Could be two inches, could be twelve, I'm not sure. But, but I think we, we need to, and I'm not necessarily saying for, for maybe this storm, because it's like happening in a few hours. But I think we need to do something just to, so we're all clear as to what the, what the rules really are. I'm sorry, Matt.
No, and I just wanted to make a comment, like you said, how are we gonna enforce this? And we continually come up with, you know, things that we need to, to do, you know. And it's gonna be, I, I feel like it's gonna be just like the trees, you know what I mean, that have to come down. It has to be reported to us. There's nobody gonna be driving around enforcing this. Like, we're, we're personally not, as the councilor is gonna run around town and say, oh, you didn't shovel. I'm giving you a warning.
No, but we have officer, like police officers who are patrolling the roads. And then there's also DPW who are out plowing and.
I understand where you're coming from, but on the other hand, I don't feel it's their responsibility to do it either.
I agree.
They're, they're doing public service and they're doing DPW, they're doing their job. I get it.
But if we have, if we have after twenty-four hours that you're, you're supposed to shovel, then, then my opinion is the zoning enforcement officer goes out. I think this would be zoning, right? Because it's an ordinance. Am I right on that?
Whether it's zoning or not.
Would it be a zoning issue if people don't? Like, could the zoning enforcement officer go out and then issue warnings to let people know that they should, they should have shoveled their sidewalks? Would that, would that fall under?
Well, it is in the ordinance already, but I don't know whether it's in zoning also.
Well, we, that would be a clarification that we need, like, do, are the police running around giving real warnings? Or are we doing, you know, from Bill, is Bill running around going, which is another whole thing altogether, which I think is on here too, is that, right, Bill is filling in for us currently. And to do that on top of everything, I don't feel it's even Bill's responsibility to run around and say, all right, you didn't shovel, you didn't shovel, you didn't shovel.
And I would say in my experience, we're in towns, it would, they would have bylaws. It would be a general bylaw, not a zoning bylaw, as far as sidewalks.
I would say, yeah, I'm looking at the ordinances right now, and I don't think this is underneath our zoning. This is just a general ordinance.
General ordinance, right.
Yep.
Okay, so then, again, so that opens up the question of, so who enforces it?
Right, but it's like, for me, it falls along the lines, if my neighbor didn't mow his lawn and it's a foot long.
Mind your business.
You know what I mean? Well. Mind your business or you can call the Board of Health, because the Board of Health will send them a letter and say, you gotta mow your lawn. It's a public hazard.
It's not, though.
Well.
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily, right. I'm just saying, right.
But not, not everything is a homeowner. It could be.
No, and I totally understand. There's a lot of rental units in town. I get it. I understand, you know, so.
I just think we need to get clarification. I don't really, I didn't mean to go down that rabbit hole, but since I had somebody that reached out specifically, I wanted to just bring it up. All right, so first, first reading, next meeting, and forty U, next meeting, okay? All right, next issue, uh, I'm sorry, next agenda item. Maybe it's an issue, sorry. Discussion of building, building inspector and local inspector. Go ahead, Bob.
So we unfortunately lost our building inspector, who for personal reasons suddenly retired. Mr. Fenner, who had been the zoning agent, is filling in. He's also assistant in the town of Charlton. From what I've seen, and we dealt with him today, I think that he has done an excellent job. I think he's working hard to catch up on things that need to be done. I can speak to you about that if you're interested in some of the issues. We have not had much luck in advertising. And speaking to Mr. Fenner, that's not a surprise. I think there are a great many openings across the state for building inspectors and building commissioners. Frankly, I think we've seen this in all municipal positions for some reason, and not just town manager, but a. reason, and not just town manager, but accountants, what have you. One proposal that he had was that he would remain as a part-time building commissioner, and the town, instead of looking for a building inspector or a building commissioner, would look for a, a local inspector who would be paid less. The real difference between the two, as Mr. Fenner explained it, is that a building inspector or a commissioner can issue occupancy permits. A, a local inspector can do everything else. Also, he mentioned that despite the fact that he's already working full-time in Charlton, and really putting in a lot of hours here, which I talked to him today about, he can't go on with the present situation much longer, he would be willing to apply for the position here in Palmer. But it would call for an increase in wages. Now, I had written to the council, and we all know about the situation, we've seen a lot of turnover here. There was a wage and classification study done several years ago, and I can get into detail if you want about where many of these positions should be, but what he is looking for is more in line, actually less than I think where the position should be, looking, depend, looking at what the market rate was in 2020, which where that study was done. He would be looking at, and I can give you the number, at least eighty thousand dollars. Bonnie was making seventy-four and change. I don't see that as a big jump. I think it is, look at as a necessary step, when you look at what department heads are being paid across town, which is something for another meeting, and I'm going to try and address and talk to the council and the budget subcommittee when we get into that. But I think that's an excellent solution. I think that, just in my opinion, in the short time that I've worked with him, I've been impressed. I think he's extremely capable. I think he's shown a lot of initiative. I think he's put in a lot of hours to help the town. I think that he's really helped all of us, frankly, not just me, but all of us, the way he stepped up to fill this void after Bonnie retired. So that would be my recommendation, is to appoint him a full-time building inspector.
Would we need to vote as a council to increase that budget item before we hire him, or what does that look like?
How does that work?
Well, the position's been vacant for.
A month.
A month.
A month. He hasn't been working, and he hasn't, he hasn't been working full-time.
Okay, so there should be enough, ma- maybe?
It was already advertised. Position was advertised.
A few, but I, I think Mr. Fenner would, is head and shoulders above the applicants.
So I would say this, I, I think that we should just leave the position as it is, as a building inspector, and let Bob take the steps that he needs to take, to attempt to fill the position.
Without adjusting the budget, this year's budget?
If he needs to do that, we can do that at our next meeting, because I think that there'll be, you have enough flexibility right now to do that.
Only six grand, and plus, the capability to do, issue COs is huge. You can't have somebody here who can't issue a certificate of occupancy.
Yeah, so he's, that's why he stepped in.
Right, exactly, so.
Right. Yeah, I think that going to a part-time building inspector would be regressive. Like, I don't, I don't think that that is a good long-term solution, so I would like to do what it takes to continue to have a full-time building inspector.
Exactly. Over the years, we've heard constantly complaints, not per se about the personnel, but as in just the, the amount of workload in that office, and that to, to go part-time would be horrible. I think you would definitely, with all the projects we have going on.
Right.
And all the ink, all the things that we have, you know, in the works, I think that, that filling that position is a priority for us as a town.
And the people were complaining about the, the slowness of it, so they were overwhelmed.
Because of the workload, right.
That's what Matt said, right.
So, is there anyone not in agreement with just continuing as, with the building inspector role as a full-time position? Everybody good with that?
Yes.
And ra- and raising the salary?
Correct.
Yep.
Okay.
Well, thank you. I think that's a very positive step.
Thank you for your input.
Okay, so next is subcommittee reports. Anything? Miscellaneous correspondence. Anything?
Yeah, something.
You think? Counselors?
No, I know, I didn't.
Oh, you got it? Or did it come back again?
What was just put out, let's see, an outline, the assessors put out.
Oh, the, the thing that was posted?
What the true definition of its meaning. It, it's about the businesses paying taxes on their property, is it not? There was something in there.
It was about personal property.
Form of list for personal property.
Right, but the word individuals was in there, then it went partnerships, and so on, and people were freaking out that it was that.
Yeah, so I don't know the details.
As an individual, I've got to write down everything I have in my house and send it to the assessors.
That's not what it is.
So I, I did have the opportunity to talk to this resident who posted on Facebook, and clarify what personal property means, because it can be a little bit of a confusing topic for people who don't work in the municipal world. And then this resident also did come in and speak with the assessors, who cleared up any questions that they had. So I think this person has been satisfied with the response.
You got to be kidding me. But, but just to get it out there, it's, it's exactly what I'm thinking, correct? It's about business properties.
Yes. Yes, it was, that letter was directed towards business owners, and then if they have property that's worth over twenty-five hundred dollars.
Individual in there.
Yeah, some, some of the legal lease.
Actually, read it, the, the part that said, doing business in this municipality was the key word.
Yeah.
Clarify. So I just wanted to get that kind of clarify.
Yeah, some of the legal lease can get a little confusing, but yes, that is, it's meant for businesses.
Right.
Yeah.
Uh-huh, sure is.
So I wanted, I wanted to announce.
I understand it well.
Received an email from Matt Morse, that he applied for a complete streets grant, and we were awarded five hundred thousand dollars.
Excuse me?
Matt Morse had sent an email that he had applied for a complete streets grant, and he was awarded five hundred thousand dollars, or the town was awarded five hundred thousand dollars, actually.
Thank you, Matt.
What is this?
Four hundred and ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars.
And ninety-eight cents.
Or whatever.
Those are dollar pen processing fees.
Was that because of administrative costs?
Probably.
Penny processing fee.
I have no idea.
I didn't, I didn't see that, but does he have a plan, or do we have a plan?
So he said that, I believe in the email he sent, he said that he would.
Well, he said that the council had voted on the, a list of priorities, and I think it just is tied to our complete streets plan, which I don't remember when we did complete streets. But he also said that he was going to come back to us with an itemized list of where that five hundred thousand dollars was going to go.
Correct.
And do we vote on that?
Uh.
Or he can just?
No, um, hold on to funding. So, yeah, it will, funding will be used to tackle a prioritization list that was built and approved by the council. The follow-up was with more information.
Yeah, I'd be interested. I don't remember a prioritization list.
I just remember the five hundred vehicles.
Right.
And equipment they wanted. I'll get the list from you.
Well, complete streets is a specific program that makes using public roads, and identifies other modes of transportation besides vehicles. And so that, it's not going to go necessarily to vehicles, but it's going to go to something like sidewalks, or bike lanes, things like that.
Okay, so anyway, I just wanted to announce that publicly, and I did, I did send an email back to, to Matt, just, you know, thanking him for his hard work in, in getting that real. And, so maybe he can come to our next meeting, and just talk about it a little more, if he's ready. If not, the meeting after that. So I don't know if we're on miscellaneous correspondence or councilor's roundtable, but either, anybody have anything else?
I have two questions. Anything further from the library trust money? I don't know if you guys heard anything.
What we did, I think they're working on a couple of things. One is how they're going to handle the bequests, and another, they're working with real estate council on, about the land that they have inherited. We inherited or, the bequest. The, we did meet as part of the budget process with the library director. Their plan is to use part of the bequest money to handle a roof project that they have, and they will, they will use that to take care of the library roof.
And then, this might be a DPW question. They don't have a flag flying down there. They haven't for like a year.
Flag?
Yeah. Nice pole. No flag.
Anybody else?
I have a million dollar question. When's the bridge going to open?
Here we go.
I know everybody wants to know, so I want to know just as bad as everybody else, so.
You think about how they would have a deadline.
Final walkthrough.
So what he had posted on Facebook the other, so, hold on. So on January twenty-sixth, the Acro Bridge was on site for certification inspection. So he had posted that on Facebook. I had asked that they update that. So there's some punch, punch list items. The contractor will submit verification forms, pictures for proof of those punch list items, and then they will be sending us an official inspection report within the next week and a half to two weeks. The contractor still has finishing tasks to perform, hardware, handrails, guardrails, and such. So it should be soon.
Awesome. And then, my next one is, any updates on Liberty Plaza? It doesn't seem like it's going anywhere at the moment, so.
It's kind of winter.
Well.
I've just.
It's been plenty. They could have been digging.
I'm just asking.
They have been down there.
But I can't repeat.
The gates have been open, and the trucks have been working, so.
I've just heard, and again, this is just hearing on the streets, okay, that the way it's progressing, the way it is, is because the general contractor is only issuing X amount of dollars per time to take Phil out of there, and then when that's used up, then they'll review the project and say, okay, here's a X amount more funds, take more materials out of there. Could be rumor, could be not. But that was, because I had asked to, and that was the reason I had gotten from people who own businesses across the street from there.
Due to the contractors.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Right, and what I heard was they hit ledge.
Well, probably, yeah, one in the same, right.
They were trying to dig, and they couldn't, because they, there's a bunch of rock there, so.
It probably costs more to dig the ledge out first than to haul it away.
But I did, I think when I was in your office the other day, when I stopped in on Thursday, I think Bill said that they have all their permitting now, that they're all good. So I'm hoping that it starts going. So, we'll see.
Still better than it was.
The trucks are down there. If you drive by two or three times a week, the gates are open.
I haven't done anything last.
No, they haven't.
Do you know, like, other people do, you know, if they don't get in by a certain time, charge them so much a day?
Too late, it's private.
You know, like normal businesses do, do we put that in the contract?
That would be if, if we held the contract, that would be if we were doing.
That's like the bridge.
We hired somebody, but this is a private, private ownership of that property.
Something that would have been put on the bridge.
They should have done it.
Either way, it's better than it was.
Would have been done.
Oh, yeah. I have one other quick thing, just for the, it's official, the Palmer Studio, the old Park Street school, my little brother is Hebe Pottery, is going to finally be.
Thanks, Dave.
He's finally got the place renovated decent enough, I guess, to open up his pottery studio on February nineteenth on Park Street.
Great, nice.
Besides the one they have in Sturbridge by, uh, Bushett Off.
In the mill yard, yeah.
Yeah. So that'll be opening up, and I know he does classes and this and that. I'm sure once we get hours, I can get him out there.
Yeah, that's great. Anything else, anybody? Okay, we're moving into executive session.
Oh, wait, no, I'm just kidding.
Hold on tight.
I'm teasing.
I have one question.
Yeah.
I have a question, before you, before we enter executive session. In layman's terms, could you explain item C about the schools there? I don't know. Where's all I need?
Well, that's going to be a discussion about the disposition of those properties.
The disposition of that property.
And the, and the liability waiver is also.
Yeah, okay. I remember about probably four meetings ago, Mrs. Barry had mentioned that we have to get into these schools, and see what's, what's there, and that probably went nowhere, right? Nobody in town council went into those schools, right?
It's not, well, it's not up to the town council to get into the schools, it's up to employees.
Well, you had mentioned, we, in the town council, have to get into the schools.
We, the collective we, like, we the town.
Yeah.
Not we the council.
Okay. Next question. I can do again at one of the meetings. I'll say, I'll probably, I'll say, you asked the town manager to get an appraisal on Thorndike Grammar School. Were you talking the school building, or the whole property, and probably nothing happened there either, right?
That was when Mr. Rick Nutt was here still?
Yes.
I have not seen that appraisal, so I think that it did not happen.
It never happened.
But Mr. Reed is trying to take care of some of this stuff, which is why we're going into executive session.
Okay, there's, now, you should have an appraisal.
We don't disagree. To Barbara's point, it wasn't our responsibility. So, let's move forward, okay?
Who'll raise it?
Again.
Again, it was charged to the town manager. He's no longer here. It's being addressed by Mr. Reed, so we're moving forward.
Great.
Thank you.
Okay, so first item, Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty A, Section Twenty-One, Number Three, discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares. The United Public Service Employees Union, UPS EU, Local Two, Four Twenty-Four M, DPW and Administrative Unit, Contract Twenty-Twenty-Two to Twenty-Twenty-Five. Second item, Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty A, Section Twenty-One, Number Three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares. Hernibetz Park Playground, N.E. O'Brien and Sons, Inc. Third item, Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty A, Section Twenty-One, Number Six, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property if the chair so declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body. Converse Middle School and Thorndike Grammar School, and so declare. Do I have a motion?
I'm moved.
Motion to enter an executive session.
Second.
Motion by Phil, second by Jessica. Roll call, vote. Matt, how do you vote?
Yes.
Carl?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, good night.
Oh, well, could you just mention?
Oh, whoops, I'm sorry, yes, I'm sorry, yes. So we're going to, we will exit executive session, we'll return to open session to take a vote on the collective bargaining agreement with the DPW and Administrative Unit, their contracts for Twenty-Twenty-Two to Twenty-Twenty-Five, and then we will adjourn therefrom. We will not be going back live when we go back into open session. Okay, thank you, Bob, sorry about that. Okay, good night.